Village Board meeting took order. If you'd all please join me in a moment's silence. By the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you take your role.
Trustee Nice.
Present.
Trustee Tri. Here. Trustee Ferguson. Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
Present.
Bill's President Kimsey.
Present.
Uh, public announcements this evening. I've got the mic, so I can go first, Les.
Okay.
Uh, last week, the village was recognized by I M E A, I N Q A, and I P E A for a system achievement award presented in the village's chat. Uh, before we got notes, it's in recognition of its employees, its employee skills, dedication, and response to coordinating the safe, efficient, and successful restoration of electric service to the village customers following the devastating derecho which struck central Illinois June twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. So this was presented to, uh, the village, myself, our retired foreman at the time, Shane Nell, Pat Trent, recognized our electric department, our public works personnel, and all of the village's chapels. So they got everybody into it, which is exactly how something like this should have been recognized, and it took everybody to do that. So, uh, at the same conference, Shane was also recognized, uh, and given a lifetime achievement award by the same organization, uh, in response to the recognition of his thirty-eight years of service, not only to the village, but to I M E A as a board member, and really to Illinois Public Power, as a village, uh, with all things that that guy did. So, uh, we have a nice plaque. Shane has his own nice plaque. We'll decorate the hall again. Thanks again to everyone that was part of that. Now you can act.
Les Morton with the Chadon American Legion. Um, let's see. First, I'd like to ask for permission, like we did last year, from Wednesday, Wednesday before Memorial Day, to put flags along Route Four. Um, then the next thing is to ask for permission to use veteran memorial par on Memorial Day for better state ceremonies.
Memorial Day ceremony?
Memorial Day.
Nine thirty?
Uh, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, okay.
Right, just after everybody that's participated may be there at nine thirty. Uh, we're gonna be doing some things a little bit different this year, so come and see what's going on. Um, and then on May the twenty-fifth, Saturday morning, with the assistance of the scouts, we'll be putting out flags. We'll have over four hundred flags for veterans in our three semitaries, the two here in Chadon, one at up front. And then on Memorial Day, ceremony starts at ten o'clock, and then we'll pick up the flags that night at five o'clock. Um, we still have memorial brick applications available, if anyone is interested. The D M E D will be helping the American Nation on Memorial Day with the ceremony. And then on thirty-one May at seven A M will be music bingo. That concludes my announcements. Any public comments on the agenda topics?
Very done. Old business, item one of new business. It's a resolution granting the Chadon American Legion the use of village square for their carnival. Motion bring that to the board?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Trustee Charo, signed by Trustee Tri. Uh, any discussion? Very done. All in favor?
Aye.
Oath. So moved. Item number two, resolution approving the purchase of mulcher and skid steer for the electric department. Can I get this one correct? Do I motion to bring this to the board? Trustee Fletcher made a motion to abstain.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, my trusty nice. How was the amount on this one?
Uh, it should be thirty-four. It's two pieces, so with ones the skid steer for around sixty thousand, and then the mulcher.
One's thirty-four, one's seventy-five, I think.
Yeah. They both in the budget. All the appropriations and documents are included in the ordinance.
You have to pay things as well. Sixty-five thousand, three seventy-five on the skid steer, and thirty-four thousand one on the mulcher.
They've used that to go around the bottom of trees and transformers and stuff like that to clear everything away, so we won't have the overgrowth that we had the next time the storm comes through.
Any further discussion or questions? Very done.
Who's quick? Uh, Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Absolutely.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Item three is resolution approving the purchase of pickleball net systems. Can I motion to bring this to the board?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee Nice made a motion, I cited my trusty Tri. Uh, excuse me, this is a one quote, sixteen portable pickleball net systems from on court, off court, giving changers, thirty-seven thousand quarter, thirty-seven dollars, eight point seven cents. Discussion, questions?
Any questions? My pickleball expert is sitting in the back of the room, right there.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Motion bring consent agenda to the table?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charo's made a motion and a second. Second by Trustee Fletcher. Any discussions regarding warrants or the minutes? Very done, Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Fletcher.
Yes.
Public comments on other business?
Let's go.
Good afternoon.
Relax.
Good afternoon.
Redline, you're fine.
You can hear me very good. Um, I'm Robo Associate, representing Chadon Friends of the Parks and the Chadon J C's this afternoon, asking for permission to enlarge our footprint at the, uh, the property of ninety-five oh three, ninety-five oh five South Main, which is in the electric and streets department complex. Um, as we have rebuilt a building there in August two thousand and fifteen, and as right at the park has grown over the years, building is full. And so, you know, just, we are interested in having permission, I guess, to expand to the west if we could. And, you know, there are no concrete plans yet, but, you know, we have, looking at different bids, getting different ideas, and just, you know, before we go any further and start picking contractors, you know, make sure that you can do this.
In the past, when they built their two buildings down there, uh, the J C's and Friends of the Park came to the board and asked for permission to do that, and the board gave them permission to put the stuff there. Uh, well, they've asked me, think today, but about adding on. I said, you can come, tell them what you're planning, maybe sketch up what size building and about where you're gonna put it. I can bring that back and show them, and we can do a motion or something like that at the next meeting, okay?
Because the other, the other thing that Andrew is furiously writing on his notes is to, uh, pull up the ground lease agreement and see if that needs to be extended too.
I don't, I don't know if it, because there is no legal description on that, I don't think.
There is an agreement, there is an agreement.
There is an agreement, yeah. So we'll look at it.
So we'll check that, and if you want to kind of put together a concept, sketch of what kind of area you're gonna connect with, right? That's where to go on.
And one thing that, when we did build the initial building, it's built large enough that, you know, if we were no longer using it, that it would be appropriate for the village to use. And, you know, we're actually considering larger garage doors this time, so that, you know, bigger trucks could go in if, you know, for some reason, at some point, time to go away, we'd be able to, the village to use.
Any other public comments? We will put a reminder out on camera that we are taking nominations right now for naming a volunteer tribe, which is straight through the community park. Currently have John and Manny Waters naming one, uh, but if anybody would like to submit a nomination for a volunteer, uh, of a resident here that lives here in Chadon, email Patrick for nominations.
And a word on why you think they should be nominated?
And for anybody that doesn't remember, have a clue. Once we get all those nominations, we let all of our previous honorees assemble and look at this year's nominations, uh, and that make a recommendation back to us, who they believe will be the one for this year. Get those in if you got them. That's all I've got. No need for a closed session. Take a motion to adjourn the board.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Nice made a motion. Sighted by Trustee Fletcher, all in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it's about six to ten, then I have myself at six to eleven. It's six to eleven. Let's follow the committee of hold's order. All right.
Trustee Nice.
Present.
Trustee Tri.
Here.
Trustee Ferguson. Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
I'm here.
Bill's President Kimsey.
Present.
All right. Any public comments on agenda items? Hearing none. We'll move to consent agenda. Can I have a motion to bring that consent agenda to the table for the April ninth minutes? Trustee Tri has a motion, can I have a second? Trustee Fletcher has seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's no old business. New business, uh, we have an I M E A, uh, presentation. Please look forward.
Thank you. I appreciate you having us here today. Uh, as you know, we have a new power sales agreement for you that you'll be considering. And, uh, we are here today to give you some background on the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency, um, how we have worked together in the past with the city of Chadon and your thirty-one other, uh, sister cities who have formed the I M E A, and we'll touch on some of the highlights of the contract, um, what we'll do today, um, because you would be annoyed at my voice if I did all the slides. We're gonna break this down into three, uh, presenters. Um, with me today is, uh, John Wyant and Mike Jimm. I'm gonna take you through the first six slides, and then I will pass the speaking stick to them. Um, after we, uh, present, we'll be glad to take questions. If something occurs to you in the moment, you don't want to wait, we're not going to not answer a question, so, um, pipe in whenever you can. So if we go to the first slide here, it's the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency of Chadon. One of the great things about this is that you have handouts, and I love handouts, but what I hate is people who read the entire slide, so I'm not going to do that for you. I'm just gonna pick things, uh, out, uh, to draw your attention to, and then you can take your time with these slides later. Um, so we've had forty years of success, and we have had forty years of success together. Um, the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency, our job is essentially to procure or generate electricity and bring that electricity through transmission lines to your city delivery points where your own municipal utility then distributes it. And as you can see, you distribute it very well. They wouldn't have given you that award otherwise. Um, we were, uh, founded in nineteen eighty-four, and Chadon was one of the initial members who, uh, got together, it happened as cities got together to form the I M E A. Why did they do that? Well, the obvious reason was they were getting gouged on their wholesale electric prices, and they thought, well, maybe we'll make sort of a liars' club, where we can go out then and procure electricity cheaper and bring it to the city that way. Over the years, um, I M E A has evolved, Chadon has evolved, and began partially taking power from I M E A in nineteen eighty-five, and then you became a total requirements number in two thousand and five. The next slide shows us what a joint action agency is. I sort of just described it. It's a nonprofit, limited local government, just like you, formed by the cities that, uh, will take power from it. So, in a lot of sense, your mission is our mission, we're in it together. We're not out to make profit off you, we're out to serve you for as long as you want to have a municipal electric department. We think that's for a long time. All right. And so let's move on to the next slide. This is my favorite slide. Um, this is something that I would, if I, if it were me, I would go ahead and just mark this and go back and look at it at a later date. Um, so this is, uh, a slide that compares what I M E A does that a standard power marketer does not do. Um, and if you take a look, uh, there are things that are built in that a wholesale price that I M E A gives to the city that will not be built into a wholesale price if you were to get your power from a new agency. In the end, an electron is an electron, right? Just like milk. Some people think milk tastes better in a glass jug. We're sort of a glass jug. Um, so one of the, a couple of things I want to just point out on here, because I like to brag on this, is, uh, you folks have, uh, really used, taken advantage of your electric efficiency and your electric vehicle options that you have. Um, you have obligated, over the course of time, three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred dollars in incentives. And that means when the school or one of your businesses is in town, or the, uh, ballpark lights go in, you can tap into some money that I M E A has set aside for you to help pay for those projects. Um, and over the years, you have saved, uh, a total first year energy savings of nine hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred kilowatt hours. So not only are you taking some cost off the top of that project, you're saving money every time. You also have an electric vehicle program, uh, and Chadon was the very first to tap into that program, uh, to help pay for the lease of a electric vehicle for the city. Um, that one lease payment, you're gonna have another lease payment helped out in a few weeks. Um, the other thing, if you take a look at that, that second to the last, um, item on this list, and you, uh, I, I want to point that one out, because that is a big one. Um, and I think Pat, uh, would be in a better shape to explain all this to you, but for example, um, right now, you are involved in, um, in a CERC, which is a, uh, a reliability corporation, is having you register as a transmission owner. Um, and that process, being a federal process, is a process with a capital P. Now, I know you all have worked hard on it, but I also know that, uh, we've had people in our offices that have helped you through that, and that's the kind of expertise that no one of their standard product power marketer is going to give you. And why won't they do that? Well, they're just not set up to do that. They, they will sell power to anyone. They don't, they're not keyed into what your mission is and what your goals are, the way I M E A is. Why? Because we're new. So let's take a look at the, um, current I M E A contract. The I M E A currently serves our members through September thirtieth, twenty thirty-five, and of course, you're looking at a new power sales contract that starts right thereafter. The obvious question that you probably have, and maybe some citizens have, is why are we coming to you now? That's a darn good question that will be covered later in the slides, um, but there are good answers, and I will just preface the answer, is I M E A plans for the long term. Our long-term gain, uh, getting long-term contracts and having long-term ownership stakes in generation has made it so that we can give you low and even more, uh, important predictable wholesale prices. And so you know what that price is gonna be from the very get-go each year, and we have, um, in the past eleven years, we have gone under that price that we've promised you ten times. Um, why? Because our, our mission is long-term. Other folks might give you a two, three-year deal. Um, if the electricity business goes south on them, they'll plant corn, God bless them. Um, however, we're in it for the long term, just like you are. Why? Because you formed us to be a partner with you and the thirty-one other cities that are with you. Looking ahead, once the I M E A long-term debt is paid off in two thousand and thirty-five, you'll have ownership of resources that will ensure steady rates, steady supply, and a solid set of resources, all things being equal, which they still do want, but, um, what else, how can you predict? But what we have predicted, uh, that rates are projected to significantly decrease by as much as twenty-five percent when our bonds are paid off in two thousand and thirty-five. What are the advantages of the I M E A contract? Well, first of all, I M E A is in better shape financially than at any time in its forty years of existence. If you take a look, I M E A has the highest financially rated power supply in Illinois with A-plus, double A-minus, uh, ratings from the ratings agencies. I M E A will continue to create strong value for our membership, and as I keep on saying, our agency is yours, it's built into where we are today, and together, you're, we're gonna build this future. And the advantage is each city that's a member of I M E A has a voice on the I M E A board. Your, uh, Pat McCarthy is the board member currently serving. Shane had served before that. Um, no other power supplier is going to give you a voice in what the mix of that power supply is gonna be, uh, help, let you have a voice in what the decision making is gonna be behind procuring, uh, that power. You're going to have that voice if you stay with I M E A, just as you do now. And with that, those are my first slides. I'm gonna pass it over to John Wyant, who will take you through the next couple of slides. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Rob. Excellent. So I'm here to talk to you today about the three pillars of I M E A: affordability, reliability, and sustainability. We are affordable. We are a nonprofit, okay? What that means is we do not answer to shareholders, we do not have to provide stock dividends or anything like that. Any savings that we create at I M E A gets passed on to our member towns in order to keep your energy supply costs at affordable. Our costs today are lower than they were ten years ago. There isn't anything I can think of that is cheaper today than it was ten years ago. Absolutely nothing. Our number one job is to be a reliable source of power. When you walk in the room and turn the lights on, you expect those bulbs to light up. We do our best to provide you with that power around the clock. That includes having a twenty-four-seven operation center that, in more cases than not, will call Pat and tell him there is an outage in your town before he even has a chance to get an angry call from a customer. They are on the ball, they are on top of it, and they will help direct resources to make sure that everybody gets their lights turned back on in the event of an outage. You all just received an award last week for how well you handled the derecho event, and that should be applauded and rewarded. We are also sustainable. We are preparing for the responsible transition of moving from our legacy generation plants to more renewables like solar and wind. Uh, but we do that in a responsible fashion. We're not just gonna jump in and go to the next new idea that is for power generation. Uh, we will study it, we will make sure it is cost-effective, and when it becomes economical, we will present it to the board, and people like members of our board, uh, like Pat back there, will make a decision, vote on it, and then we will get our direction to go forward. Everything we do is done and held via local control. Nothing I M E A does happens without a vote from the board. Next slide. Now, we've talked about keeping power costs down. If you look at this slide, you can see that black line all the way across going back to two thousand and fourteen is where our energy supply costs have averaged all the way through. The blue line is our energy supply, the red line are transmission costs. As the investor-owned utilities keep increasing transmission costs, we bundle those together and we spread it out amongst all the different member utilities, so then that way no one member is paying more than another when it comes to transmission costs. As time goes on and other projects come along, those could be lowered for specific member communities, but we'll just have to wait and see how that all pans out. Next slide. We have all seen price increases in the news, whether it's gallon gas, gallon milk, or dozen eggs. Prices have been going up, and it's because of an economic strain on our customers and businesses. What we have done at I M E A is kept those energy costs at a reasonable and predictable level, so then that way you always know what your costs are gonna be whenever you open up those bills. And with that, I'm going to talk about our sustainability plan. We want to and must do more resource planning for the future. As we study available technologies and for cost, safety, and reliability, we will bring those online. As you can see on this slide, we have twenty-five megawatts of a river solar farm, six other in solar installations behind the meters at member communities, and then we have a plan for about another hundred megawatts of solar to go online within the next couple of years. We have two major wind projects of a hundred and twenty megawatts, and then we have our coal generation, which provides a bulk of the energy that we use in the market. Um, we have hydropower, that's from the river plants in Peru and Rock Falls, and then for the rest, everything else we have to purchase on the fasting market. And by doing hedging and having our own generation, we're able to keep those costs predictable. Uh, and I'm going to let Mike Jimm, our V P of Member Services, finish it up for us.
Thank you, John. Uh, big question on one of these minds is, you know, if you've got a contract with this through two thousand and thirty-five, is why do you need to act now? And if you would, the next slide, please. Uh, the reason is, is the, the industry's under transition. Our board, uh, has been working, and we developed what we call our, our path to the future, going out through two thousand and twenty through two thousand and fifty. And basically, we've got to replace several wind contracts, we've got to, we've told the state legislature we're gonna go, uh, heavier renewables, and we're probably gonna be doing battery storage, we're looking at that, different things, different things along those lines. But to do that, it's, we have to be able to move quickly, and we have to have longer term contracts. Move quickly, the reason is, is because not only are we doing this sort of thing, most people in the Midwest are doing most of the utilities, they've got their plants, there's only a certain number of good sites to do this, so if you want to put in a big solar rate, twenty megawatts, you have to connect it into transmission lines, and there's only certain, there's prime places to do that, and there's some primes. It's like the, uh, when they sell the old west, you could go out to farm sites, you got there first, you got a great farm site, you got there last, you get the swampland, less than desirable. We're kind of in that same way. We're talking to different groups, and we're getting, uh, bid prices from, uh, different groups and organizations, and, uh, what we're finding out is that for us to issue bonds, we need long-term contracts, because people want to know one, who can't submit this one bonds, they want to know that we're signing up the disciples. And then, uh, the people that are building these, they, uh, they build this solar rate, and this is the output, is generally twenty years' life of a solar rate, so they don't want to do it on a five-year contract, because they've got the fixed assets, they want basically, if, if we do a short-term, ten-year contract or a five-year, they only hit their, all their fixed costs in five years versus twenty. So it's like if you buy a house and you get a five-year loan, your payments are gonna be really high. If you get a thirty-year loan, they're gonna be, be a little bit less. So if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, basically, what we're doing is we've got a net zero target for two thousand and fifty, and to be, and as I said earlier, to do that, we need longer term contracts, and, uh, we're really moving forward that way. We've put these contracts out, uh, beginning in March, we've got thirty-two members, we've already got fourteen city councils that approve them, and something back, we're gonna have a couple more, we're told, in the next, uh, couple of weeks. Go to the next. Go to the next slide, please. The current expiration date on this is, you know, 2035. We, at 2035, we will have under our control, because if we bought the house, about 500, 550 megawatts. Right now, we've got 950 megawatts of customers. And we need to know if, if we don't have everybody signing up, we don't really need to buy a lot more. And so what we don't want to do is go out there and say, right, we've got town X, we think they're coming over and go the 20-megawatt solar array, hook up to them, and then find out their bond. And we've got this solar array that's basically a stranded asset. Different things like that. We've got these couple wind farms that are, our contracts are going away. We're planning on adding 100 megawatts of solar. And from talking to people we're working with, they, they really value these long-term arrangements because they know they're going to be a reliable customer. If you go to the next slide, please. This basically shows what we're facing. Rob talked about the chart on the right about our prices of our members. Right now, the mortgage payment, just 25% of our cost per moment. And that goes away in 2035, where we see the base drop off in the cliff. And that shows how our rates are going to go down. The slide in red looks like it's in, the font doesn't turn Japanese, I guess. I don't know how that happened. But that shows basically what our prices would be under a 10-year agreement and a 20-year agreement. So there's a premium if we go with the shorter contracts. So the notional bids, we haven't locked anything in, and we can't quote prices, but just for discussion purposes, if you look at the average cost, $65 a megawatt hour versus 95. So right now, if we go short and just try and lock everything into 2035, it's a 45% premium. And a war for, for your share of that, it'd be about $140,000 a year. So basically, everything we use on the program shares. So by doing it for long-term on this, this notional project, we'd save 6.4 million a year. You guys are about 2.3% of our load, and so your share is about $140,000. So it's, it's a strong value for us to go longer. Next slide, please. And the current contract details is basically the existing agreement. I mean, we've set it up to the attorneys, and it's, we've got date changes on there. The rates and charge is how we do everything, it's pretty much the same thing. We've got the ability for the members to do what we call the self-directed option. If you go to the next slide. The self-directed option, basically, we've got some of our towns wanting to go into renewables. And we've got two towns already that, when we did our current contracts, they wanted hybrids. So Peru has a renewable asset of a hydro, and Rock Falls has an asset of a hydro. And basically, extending this, if a town wants to do renewables, they can. And it would be, the town would go out and do their own renewable contract, and it would be supplied in. But they, it's their responsibility to do that. And we just work it into our power supply mix. But what this does is it holds everybody else harmless. So if town X wants to do this, can they go, can we go into, like Corstover, where they do a renewable project, and they make energy from burning core stocks? It holds you guys harmless, they're on the hook for it if they want to do that. Same thing if they want to do a wind turbine project, if they want to do 5 megawatts of solar. They can do it, but you guys are held harmless. If you want to do it, everybody else is held harmless. So that's something that is just totally voluntary, it's up to you if you want to do it. With the current contract, the 20-year agreement with the term beginning in 2035, we call it a new contract, because I guess, I was told, I'm not a lawyer, but under state law, the most we can do is 50 years on any kind of a municipal agreement. And that'll start over, you just can't keep extending it. And next slide, please. So, so basically, what we're telling you is, we think that you can have this, pretty much the same deal you have now, except it's going to be better because we've got all these downward pressures here with our bonds going away. And we're not going to say that our price will be 25% lower, but we've got a 25% edge. It's wind room, there's a lot of stuff that may have to go wrong. We can get back, you know, to be heard after that 25% goes away. With that, open up your questions, if you'd like to be said.
Sure, awesome. Answer the first one, 14 of the 32 of our group resigning?
Correct. We've all been unanimous, except we had one member vote from a council meeting. That was, sounds like that was a personal issue between the council people.
Hi. And then, when you talk about your 2035 is your target for a cost decrease, is that projected cost decrease, is that incumbent on changes to CJA? Or is that with CJA as it's currently written? So you're, you're looking at those savings to exist with Prairie State on a 45% reduction for whatever that timeframe is?
What we're, what we're staying on that, the 25% is, of our cost structure, the bonds made up 25% of our current cost structure. So the bond, it's like you live in a home, and the mortgage payment's going away. And then whatever happens in the future, we, we would deal with, maybe in the roof, things like that. So, and their CJA, we told our board members, the world's changing, and they're addressing, they want phased-out fossil fuels in Illinois for power plants over 25 megawatts. So that's something we're going to be dealing with in the future, is how we manage that, and how the state administers the law. And then how the federal government, because, yes, state law, but the federal government, they say, the grid's going to collapse if we don't have our plant in place, and they change things. That's, up to the future, we don't know how that's going to turn out.
Have St. Charles and Naperville signed by far?
Not, no. Naperville has basically said they're going to address this in the fourth quarter. And then St. Charles has talked about doing it this summer. And those are two big months for the people. It's, Naperville's about 35% of our load, and St. Charles is about 10% of our load. And if we lost, if Naperville signed up to go, they, they can do that. We're basically back to where we were in 2008, when the agency was doing fine at that time. So we want them to come back.
You want them to come back, but it's, they don't have to financially.
Oh, this is St. Charles, it's a 35% of Naperville.
I'm sorry?
Naperville's 35%. What is, what is St. Charles?
St. Charles is about, I'd say about 10%. Or just, St. Charles has just over 100 megawatts, and our total load's 950. Naperville's 300 for...
What's challenge?
Thank you. For now, Dr. Lewis has got to be our meeting, probably comment.
I thought I could say you would answer any question.
You can ask during the comments.
We're at 2%. Is what you said?
Yeah, I think you said 3%.
2.3%.
26.5 megawatts of 950 megawatts, so.
So about 3.
You can measure it two ways, so you can go KW or K8, so you could...
So that, so your, your cost savings, you're saying is that's not, that's not assuming anything changes in our law? That's strictly on the bond payment and then that? And it's not necessarily figuring in how much replacement energy is going to cost for what you're looking at per state, tribal county?
Yeah, we've got some, we're passing a layering contract, so it's like buying stocks. So if some of the contracts go away, policy of price savings, replacements are cheaper, someone will make it more expensive, and it's just whatever the market is. But the sooner we get people signed up, the more flexibility we have, and we won't be as under the gun, we'll wait seven years to do something.
How much of IMEA's power right now comes out of Prairie State? You know, the percentage that it's providing?
I think the per state is about 220 megawatts out of 950.
How much do we have to go out and buy on the market? How many of the gigawatts?
Well, it all depends on how, who signs it up, if...
How many, how much are we currently buying on the open?
I can't...
We're not producing.
I can look that up, but I don't have that on.
Probably on an average day, zero. But if you get a really hot hand in this area and stuff like that, and all of our generators are going full over, they can go out and buy off the hard...
See, at night time, the loads are, and they want to keep our power plants running. And if the wind's blowing strong...
Until we get all these electric vehicles, it'll be really negative in that minute.
World's, world's changing.
Yeah.
It's really interesting.
It's going to be making all the time.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
So then, a quick recap. Sure, because I think if I whole, try to summarize highly, is the, the main crux that we ask 11 years early is so that you know how much you can contract for now. And as people are building new renewables, which is where we have to be under present law, it allows for a longer amortization period of that debt.
Would you, would you better deals?
Which makes for a cheaper pricing when you're buying, or offering, because you guarantee you're going to have cash flow for 30 years to pay off that debt as opposed to 10 years to pay off that debt. So you don't, you don't pay it up now. I mean, the owner, the owner of something like that, like it, it paid off in 10 years, and then I've got the next 20 years to come and operate and run it. But that gets factored into the rate that you guys acquire power supply.
Right. And we generally do projections for our board, we fill it out a couple of years. Though we, I've not seen anything where we're going out 10 or 20 years, because there's just so many unknowns. Interest rates have changed, the price of natural gas will change, it's... We want to get people good data, we don't want to just make big projections and hope for the world to...
Come on, would you put it all on the slide? In 2042, how much are you going to challenge?
That's, that's right.
But what, we signed up in 2008, right? And started taking power when Prairie State came online?
I think you were, you were on board before that, but...
We did this as a board before. They came, made the proposal. We agreed to it, we signed the contract that we would buy electricity from IMEA for 35 years. Then that gave them the load that they needed to be able to go to Prairie State, and said we were going to buy this bunch of road.
It, it's kind of like if you've got, you've got a child, and he's four years old, and you think the scouts are probably going to go to college, and I don't know, I don't know where he's going. But the state of Illinois has a program where if you sign up now, you get 20% off tuition. And you don't know where he's going, but everything's pointing he's going. So you do that, and the best decision with the information you have at the time.
So the, the bonds are issued based on Prairie State, right?
And Trumbull County, too.
Okay. So, all this new stuff, will they have to issue bonds for those?
It's, we've not determined, I mean, it all depends on, we're, we're going to go out, we'll bring the information back to the board, whether do we buy, do we have somebody else build it? Do we buy the output? You can build your own, and it's, it's going to be probably the least cost for what the board wants to do. I can't say the least cost, because we don't know if renewables would be below, you know, the current. But what we do is we'll put together proposals for our board to review, because we can't do anything without board permission. We're, we're like, we're like Shane Hill, and you, you know, our city councils are board.
But we may not see a 25% reduction if the bonds are issued.
That's, that's our asking.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, is that it's, right now, the mortgage is paid off, and we got the 25% portion.
You may get a second house.
But you guys are waiting to visit, so you're just basing the market on that.
The way that, that total power supply is right now, and 15 years ago now on Prairie State, when they decided to get into it, that, that and Trumbull County, those are really the only two big assets that IMEA said we want to own a portion of. Most of the other energy that we get, that other 60%, is just on long-term contracts, because somebody else's asset, we're just saying we're going to buy, hedge from...
So much from...
And that, same policy would...
The debt, the debt is made into their cost that we're fighting into, as opposed to just being debt that IMEA carries as a shareholder on Prairie State or for some... All that, all that exists in some fashion. The biggest thing that they talk about is at 2035, when that debt that we are responsible for on Prairie State is when you have the opportunity, we'll call it air quotes, opportunity, to see significant cost savings that go to us, to see your benefit of being, having ownership share. When that saving money goes back to other communities, as opposed to going back to whoever is the owner of the property.
It's like you paid off the house, and you live with it without that expense, but the rest of your life expenses go on. And you know what your life basis is.
Even, even between now and 2035, if new technology comes along with clean energy that's not expensive, that's an alternative that IMEA will look at divesting in as that replacement for Prairie State. I mean, that's the whole goal. Nobody has that cross the wall right now to say that this is what the price of electricity's going to be in 2035 or 2050.
Is there any safeguard to be get out, if we need to get out? Or is that binding for that bond?
The, the alternative, and John, is what is the alternative? Where do you buy the electricity from?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I don't know. What, where is the alternative? What is the alternative? And how are we ever, we're never really explored it anyway. So it's a middle...
Well, we have, we have, and we have deadlines sometimes. So your, your alternative, we got, because right now, we own our distribution system within, let's say we own two substations, as Rob was talking about, that we're working with CIRC and FERC and getting all the other things in Brown with the loads I'd like to choose for them. Those are integrated transmission components for the overall US grid now, or heading into that. So we own that, we own those things. So our options become, we get out of the business completely, which is you, by 2035, you've found a buyer for your loans, for your entire distribution system. But then, in Illinois, which you're set on, if you're not in the distribution system servicing yourself, whatever that owner of your company is able to acquire on the only power agencies market. So there's a for-profit, you know, grade setting that goes through the ICC. So you're susceptible to that power supply. So the for-profits have to buy from...
You didn't, you didn't have to buy it from MISO, so the IMEA serves a different function with Trumbull, so...
The second option that you can get when you're out of it is you can run out a referendum that says, would you like your village council to be responsible for doing the municipal aggregation? And going out in every third year, running contracts to bid for your next three years of electric supply? Which, if you're...
It's a pain.
It's a pain, if you've timed it.
And we don't have any of the tools and the people that are in that building downtown that takes care of all that stuff.
They form the IMEA to get away from that.
If you're lucky and you time it right, you have three really good years. So if you sign a contract right before price spikes, you look like a genius for three years. If you sign that contract right as the prices go down, you, you're looking at an idiot for three years. Their option, the difference that IMEA provides based on, or you can turn it over and let every individual homeowner do that themselves, which they won't do. Some will, most of them will just stick with whatever the purchase price on the auctions is, and that's what's coming on. My name is Bill Day, Bob, your uncle, there you go. So, those are the options. Maintaining a distribution system ourself and trying to be the ones that are contracting for power supply is probably the worst position to be. Because we don't have, in that instance, is we don't necessarily have all the expertise that it takes to deal with the regulatory agencies. We don't have the necessary expertise to deal with the short-term markets, nor do we have the capacity to go beyond three to five years in locking down our contracts or layering all of these things to give a smoothing on what your infrastructure is. So in my mind, your options are, you either stick with this method that says that these guys...
Or sell the system.
Or you get out of it completely.
The thing that you face there, then, is, is they're a for-profit organization.
No, I don't, I, I get it, I understand.
There's, there's pros and cons. We went out and we looked at some of the...
We did it, we did it 20 years or 30 years ago. We made this decision 30 years ago, and we've stuck with it since.
We looked at it five years, not even that long ago. It's been four years ago, right before he's out. And what those potentials look like, and what, what all that is.
Are you good?
If you don't want to go down that route?
I don't.
I would say...
I'm pretty sure most people don't.
I would say you stay. You stay right now.
Nope.
And I know you're selling it, but did I misrepresent, did I miss anything?
No, you're...
No, you're, we're going to take you to other presentations.
Just kidding. I mean, that's, that's, in a nutshell, those are your two realistic options in my mind. You're in and maintaining your systems and you go with, you go with purchasing power. It's the same.
Yeah.
And we got a seat at the table.
Purchasing power.
We did not have a seat at the table, we were prior.
Are you guys already talking about Lee Calvin? Do you remember about those starting contracts or?
Lee Calvin, people own that, purpose this, but we, we don't want to talk about the negotiations, but we've been talking with others. It's just they got to compete now with whoever else is in the market.
How many are, I mean, how many is in the area? We're talking to everywhere.
Yeah, we get calls once a week, being building solar arrays and, and it, the calls, it shouldn't be going to our department, but they go on and...
So there's a potential where when we sign up for them, we're going to actually make better rates on...
I would think that Lee Calvin would get a better, better rate.
Because competition is more competition.
And the whole market's changed. If, when Lee Calvin was done, there were very few platters and, you know, up in northern Illinois. And we'd rather, could, bought the newer price, freshen on that.
And Mike, can I talk a little bit about project in the queue? If, if someone was going to put a hundred megawatt solar array somewhere in central Illinois, how long would that take to happen?
The queue is, they have to do studies and they, they, they oversubscribe it, it's around five or six years going when they file it. And then they've had a really high category of the projects. And then when, when, when they get a project and okay it, then they start working on the next guy. When this, these people, they say, well, we're not going to do it anymore. And they pull it out and they got to re-study for the rest of them.
So you can see why we need such a lead time because...
Absolutely, yeah. And that's, we, we want to meet our goals, I mean, our board is full of, that we're, you know, we're going to give the renewable route. And that's what we're going to do, which means that that will be something that boosts the funding that's forward and so we can get moving on it.
Does anybody want to hear Rod or John answer the question?
Mike might want to answer.
Just a lot of Kevin is here, because Kevin just reads this.
You can sit down if you want. There is a, a demo or a example ordinance that was in that packet. If, if it's your pleasure, I can have that ready with all of the chat and things in it for our next meeting. We can still discuss it longer.
I would say we can discuss it longer.
I think I had this discussion a while back, you know, so I am happy with IDA. I don't need another more discussion on it.
I need a little more encouragement than just two right now.
Why you?
Put it together and have it on the agenda.
I can.
Two weeks to marinate and think about it.
But I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it before we vote, too.
We don't ever have to vote. We don't have to table stuff, too.
I just remember this in detail and I still remember the presentations that then from IDA and studying the differences between what we were considering and what you offer. But it's fresh in my mind.
If anybody has any questions tonight, would be a good night to ask them with any of those kinds of... And a guy that's on the executive board, so.
Okay, so we're going to let it marinate, we're going to get the organs prepared then and...
I'll have it on the agenda the next two weeks for tonight.
Okay. Think about it, I love thinking things, makes everything better. My first thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
All right, do we have a COT, anything?
No, Jim could not make it to the COT.
Do you have anything to say that was behind her?
We've been working on a lot of projects. If you go to the Village webpage and look under bids, there's bids under there for concrete work, asphalt work for football courts, bids for police cruisers, for administrative vehicles, all that stuff being bid. I think we're looking for the bids tomorrow for the administrative vehicles. I think Murm's got one for police vehicles Thursday or Friday.
Friday. Then one on Thursday.
So we've been really busy putting all that stuff together. So I did try to keep a moment between worrying and everything else.
Both properties?
Go, go with those, go with those led lines, that is what that means.
Did everybody get them?
He's going to, he's going to explain why he did or didn't get them, what it all means and why you shouldn't necessarily just panic when you see something.
I don't know.
It's a bit of a thing.
So yeah, it's a lead copper rule if you came out with the federal government. And they've mandated state, the state has been mandated, it's mandated, everybody in the state, every resident has to, we have to know what their, what is the material of their service line is up to eight inches into the house. So we have, we can't go into your house and look. So these surveys went out. So what happened is when we built the inventory, I told my guys, I said, we're not going to make up what we think it is. I'm not doing that, because ten years from now, when there's an issue with plastic or copper, they're going to say, well, back in twenty-four, you guys get an inventory, I said that was plastic and it's not. So I said, if you don't know, put unknown. Well, they came back after we did that and they said, anything that's unknown, we're going to make you send out this paperwork saying that they could have lead and here's the potential hazards of lead if you have an underbikes. And then you have to send a survey out to every one of those. Well, that was forty-six hundred people. So forty-six hundred people got the survey. We have no, we have zero lead lines in Chatham that we have ever found. We cannot find one, we tried everything we could to any house that could happen. We talked to people from Greenfield, they said that most of the lines are finding under the ladder prior to nineteen thirty-five. The oldest line we've ever found was nineteen thirty-five and their copper service line's off that and not lead. So we do not believe we have any. I do, I have seen it galvanized this week, but it was disconnected at a prior date and made it transferred over to copper. So as far as I know, I've seen one galvanized in all the houses that I've been in in the last seventeen or eighteen years, which is a lot of houses. We do not have a lead problem. It is paperwork that we were mandated to send out to everybody that we did not know was in your house. You will get this letter every single year and so we know it's in our house. Because what they're going to do next is they're going to say, you have forty-five hundred unknowns, we need seven percent of those.
My, my mayor may not have gotten thrown away before I could read it. It's on Facebook, the Village of Chatham, it's on, oh, we're copper.
And then next year, they're going to get this letter.
Typical true, okay?
Next year, they're going to have a letter saying I have to have this many, like by two-hundred-and-eighty or three-hundred, whatever that number's going to be, that I have to actually add on my inventory list so that every year we're getting closer to having all of them. That's, that's the whole, that's the program. It's not a big deal, we're looking at is completing an inventory. Chatham is in great shape, but I did want to just write on there and guess if you're copper or plastic. And then ten years from now, there's an issue with plastic or copper that changes and then we have this inventory that's incorrect. So I talked with Rep. Pab, I talked with the bills, we talked with the state, I tried to get the state not to let me put these letters out. I go, it's going to cause confusion. They said, it's federal government, we have to do it. I said, okay, we have to send it up.
You have to use their...
Let's send a month's vote.
They sent the paperwork that went out, we did not make that. The, the survey was done by the IRWA, which is, we are an actual member of, I'm a rural water association, they created the survey. So that's something that all the communities are using again, so.
But if you just read, read, read that piece of paper, it tells you exactly what we're looking for and how you can fill it out.
So Brett, what you need to do is encourage.
So I can't give the water to my dogs?
Encourage people, like, like you to dig it out of the trash, look at the service line. The reminder, the reminder on that is, once, once our line hits the water meter, that's the end of the village's equipment. So the service line comes out of the water meter into your house. So we have inventories of how many connections there are for F. We've known that and reported it. But because it's not our equipment and we didn't install it, we didn't keep a record on it, for years, when that survey goes in, it says six thousand connections of an unknown type.
Correct.
And that's just what it is, not ours. It's like, I don't know if, if you run coax or if you use AD cables or if you've gone to HDMI in your house, it's yours, I don't, doesn't matter.
But part of our testing, regular testing, is doing lead testing.
This is, this I think is a big point. So we do, on our distribution system...
We do lead and copper samples. We were doing a lot of them, every time the plant changes anything, we have to go and increase monitoring. So we've been on it since two thousand twelve, we just got off last year, we're on reduced monitoring now, which is a normal monitoring. All those results are online on IEP website, Drinking Water Watch, and we're well below AD levels. We do not have lead, we barely have anybody that even tests with anything. So back prior to nineteen eighty-two, you could have copper lines with lead solder, which isn't a lead service line, there was a lead solder. So that will detect and as long as it detects below a certain number, then you're okay, so. And all the information's online, Drinking Water Watch, IEP website.
So look for my letter next year.
Brett, and for you and anybody else, just email us. All we're looking for is proof that when we change that from unknown to copper every place, and somebody came in and asked us from the state and said, are you just guessing? We'll print that off for the board. It doesn't matter what the form is, we just need something that you were telling us that your house is copper. Because I, I can't confirm what people tell you, so we just have to front off what they give us and put it in the box.
They use it like GIS, I can look at subdivisions or when plastic came in and know what year those were. I don't know, practice at that time was copper.
Now, in some, in some places, one developer did every house and can tell you this is what I installed.
Right, this is what I used.
And the only thing you don't know is, has the service line broken and have they replaced it or something?
Well, the other thing is, is we've actually, on our side, in plastic and copper, and switched two different times. Now we're on plastic, we were on copper for over ten years. Then we went to plastic for a little bit and switched back to copper and now we've been on plastic. And every single meter setter is copper. So most people have a combination of plastic and copper, that's almost everybody. But some from, I don't know, in the early days when we were building Oak Brook and Redford Ridge and all these, they're completely all copper.
So if you do have both, deep with, you want to say both?
But a combination of plastic and copper. The most important thing is it's not galvanized and it's not lead. That's what we're looking for right now. But I don't want to put, hey, I think this house was built in nineteen ninety-one, and say that's pop, or plastic, I don't want to do that. That's not...
Because you don't know.
No, we're going to put unknown, we're going to do it the hard way and eat all the dates, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That was great, there's a particular fletch we're freaking out about from your letter.
You are the open one.
I hate like, you know.
But these guys can answer the question. There's contact information, Dustin's name is in that, and JD's name is in that, it's contact information.
They called us, not the office.
Called us, they, they know it. We know it well enough now to tell everybody, don't panic, call Dustin or JD and they'll walk you all the way through it. But just like if you buy a house right now, you get a scary looking letter that says this house may have radon. If it's got radon, it'll all be totally... It's a vanity, you have to write that language, so we have to write that language. And you'll continue to get it until the answer is served.
And then they'll find some other device that, that gives water to your house. It's cancer causing and you have to go back.
We'll be back on the...
Oh yeah, it'll be PPOS.
We'll be back on the PPOS, see, we switch.
And then after about ten years, when people stop sending the letters in at all, we have to go knock, probably go knock on their door and try to find out. Because we have to decrease that number every single year.
We'll have cold beer.
There you go.
Well, soon.
Good luck, everybody trying their surveys. Anything for your, on this issue? Any public comments on village, village business here in Nellin? Our next scheduled committee in the hall is for June the eleventh, we have a closed session. And I will take a motion to each other.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I see, I see the motion and Gerger, is it Gerger?
Gerger, Usher.
I just see Gerger saying that.
It's not the first time. I think he'll second it.
Yeah, but I'll second his second.
All in flavor, favorite.
He said flavor, please.
Flavor, flame!
Oh my God, this is going to be...